Order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee for Tuesday, March 25. Having already given the invocation and saying the pledge, we have a full quorum this morning with three members present. Gentlemen, have you had the opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
These are approved. Do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move forward with it as is. Given that we have no presentation or consent agenda items, we will move directly into the debate agenda and we will begin with Mr. Schotter.
That's Mr. Prather to try to give y'all a little bit of money back.
Good morning, y'all.
Good morning.
I just have one item for your consideration this morning. This is change order number one with RCN contracting for the sheriff's repair garage. As you know, we constructed a small mechanical garage for him to work on vehicles and other items up there next to his training track, adjacent to his multipurpose facility. This is a deductive change order, so we're clearing out our allowances. Project came in on budget and on time, so by all accounting purposes, staff recommends approval. Deductive change order.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Gordon.
Good morning. First item I have this morning is an approval for a change for our SCADA system, upgrades and modifications. We recently went out with a request for proposal to update our SCADA, and the reason being is we felt like we could save quite a bit of money on our SCADA system, but we also needed some flexibility to improve our cybersecurity. So we have stuff like dual factor authentication with our new one that we couldn't get with our old SCADA system. We also wanted to improve our response times. The company we currently work with is out of Orlando, Florida, and just difficult for them to get here and do maintenance as needed. So we're looking for something within a couple hour drive of Columbia County. So we went out for an RFP. We had three proposals submitted, and a team from IT and Water Utility with help from procurement evaluated RFP and came back with a recommendation. And the recommendation was with Southern Flow. They're right outside of Atlanta. And the recommendation is for an expense of $610,000, $610,820. And we estimate over, it's more of an initial cost because we have to rebuild all of the graphics from scratch, but we estimate over 10 years, we're going to average about a $90,000 per savings, or savings per year. So in the long term, it is quite a bit of savings, and staff recommends approval.
Define SCADA. What's the acronym?
Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. So it's how we monitor everything in the water system.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
The second item is our change order to close out the project with MBKON at our two water treatment plants. This is a final change order, and it includes a list of items that were encountered during construction that added cost to the project, and it also includes liquidated damages we did assess to the project. So we had probably three major items. There's a lot of little items, but probably three major ones. One, we had a 1978 set of plans that called for a 20-inch water line that is in their ASBILs, and the water line was actually 24 inches. So that cost us quite a bit of money. We tried to reuse some spare piping to save money, and the chemical didn't cooperate with the glue and the PVC piping, even though the material was fine. It was the glue that caused some leaks, so we replaced it with stainless steel, and we encountered some unsuitable soils we had to replace, among other items. But the total, and the liquidated damages were $146,000, we assessed. So after quite a bit of negotiation and back and forth, it's $386,949.83, and staff recommends approval of this change order.
What was the initial bid price?
$12 million, $12,700,000.
Official timeline was?
Yeah, they should have been done about a year and a half ago.
And they want $300,000 more dollars?
Yes, sir. We had $500 a day liquidated damages. Some of the change orders did add time to their project, so they were justified some additional time. But like I said, we implemented about $146,000 of liquidated damages. The original change order was about $650,000, and we didn't agree to a lot of it. So we struck a lot of the change order and negotiated down to about...
Five thirty-two.
Yeah, five thirty-two. Yeah.
Five thirty-three was the changes, and then hit them with $146,000 and knocked that number down to what you see.
Motion? No.
If you want to debate it, or if you want to send it back to staff to try to continue to negotiate it, liquidated damages are a tough thing. They're in the contract. We can't assess them. But, you know, at the end of the day, they did the work, and we have to pay them for the work. We can't assess the liquidated damages. So I think the board has, or the committee has a choice. You can send it to debate, and you can debate it as a board. We can continue to work on it. You can send it back to staff and ask us to try to negotiate it down, or you can just deny it outright. If you don't deny it outright, then we'll begin the legal process with them, or I'm sure they'll begin the legal process with us. I will say, we have been working on this since last August, and we've gotten to the point where we're at the yelling and screaming point of it. So I think we're negotiating them down. It's about as far as we're going to go.
Which is my point of...
It has got very contentious at this point.
We will begin...
Very contentious with me. In what year did we start this?
2022? 2021? Trying to remember.
Longer than that.
Keep in mind, some of these things were actually changes we requested. It wasn't all just them messing stuff up. It was us asking things to be changed, redesigns. We had some underground piping he mentioned was $120,000. Of that, $300,000. Had some bad soils, which is another $100,000.
Make motion to move to debate.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It won't sit down in debate. Next.
Why is for them to show up for that debate?
The next item we have for you is an independent contractor agreement with Blue Water Engineering Services. This is for the Uche Creek Course Main. We just have an agreement with them for them to monitor soil and erosion control runoff as required per law. They'll go out and do samples after rains and weekly and monthly monitoring. We're estimating the cost for this to be less than $10,000.
Move to consent.
Just kind of a general update of that project overall.
They started down at Uche Creek, working their way up Columbia Road now. So they've started a clearing process on the first pump station site. Not sure if they've made it past there yet. It's been a week or two since I've checked.
Okay. Thank you. So moved. Next.
The next item is a renewal, number two, with Goodwin Mills and K Wood for the periodic maintenance of the hydraulic model. We developed a hydraulic model for a water system back when we developed the master plan. And so this is, they do twice a year, they do annual updates. And so this is one of those that runs from July 1st to June 30th. And so we're going ahead and renewing that contract with them for $18,000. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
So moved.
The next item is a change order for the Crawford Creek Sewer Trunk Line Replacement. This is Phase Two of the Crawford Creek Project, replacing the sewer through there. We based our rock estimate off of Phase One, which didn't have much rock, and apparently this had quite a bit of rock. So the primary cost here, well, there are two large costs in this change order, and one is for the rock itself. The other is, we had quite a bit additional pumping. It took, there was an area where we had to do a lot of bypass pumping that took six months, and it was anticipated we were going to take one, but it was just so much rock and so much blasting. It ran that cost on the line item up. The cost for the change order is $577,101.91, and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Last.
And the last item is an independent contractor agreement with NMP Fence. Under the Public Works, we went out and got three quotes on this. This is at the Reed Creek Plant. Our fence was damaged during Helene, and per our permit, we have to have our facility secured by fence at all times, and so it's been down for a while. So because it's over to 50,000, we're bringing this to commission to approve a repair of this fence for $85,791, and staff recommends approval.
Have a special fence?
No, it's just a six-foot fence with three strands of barbed wire. A lot of the cost is clearing. There's so many trees down in the way, we can't, you can't even get equipment in. So they're going to have to cut a path and move trees off to the side. So that's a big portion of the expense.
And you're going to request FEMA reimbursement?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Try insurance. If they pay, we go through FEMA.
Insurance won't pay for fence.
That's right.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Morning, Mr. Titus.
Good morning. This first item, I'm going to ask Ms. Hope Marshall to come up and present.
Morning. I'd like to request, and I'll be, Board of Commissioners, player, that April be Safe Digging Month for Columbia County. Safe Digging Month is very important to our construction industry, whether it be Water Utility, road construction, homeowners, it's just very, very important to you. So the month of April has been player's safety.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is for the purchase of M-Track Vehicle Control Units or the preemption modules to go on emergency vehicles in the amount of $124,410. Purchase 39 new preemption modules to go in. The remaining fire rescue fleet does not have them currently. Staff recommends approval.
What are they? I'm sorry.
The preemption modules, basically, they go into the emergency vehicles, and when they turn their lights on, it lets the signals know that an emergency vehicle is coming. It gives that vehicle the all green, and makes all the other approaches red. Makes everything a lot safer when they're approaching intersections.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
This next item is bid and contract with J. Long for the installation of a mini roundabout at the intersection of General Wood Parkway and Riverwood Parkway. Staff developed a surface-only improvement to install that mini roundabout here to improve traffic flow. It would be funded out of 1722 SPOST. The low bidder was J. Long in the amount of $569,884.14. They proposed four months to complete the work from the issuance of notice to proceed. Staff recommends approval.
$4,000 less than what it was bid.
I think it's slightly more because last time, we were going to try to use staff to do it, but provided their workload and the need to get this done, we needed to bid it out, so.
It was a partial bid last time. We did have some pretty high numbers on asphalt because it was such a limited amount of asphalt, and it's, I think we got good numbers this time.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with Cranston Engineering for professional services associated with the Watson Bailey Road Improvement Project. Watson Bailey is currently almost a one and a half mile, two-lane dirt road. We've received several requests to pave the road. We've reached out to several consultants. We've received two proposals, Cranston being the lowest and most responsive, the amount of $81,508. They propose to deliver construction documents in eight and a half months. This is, we're currently proposing to fund this out of Tia discretionary. They're estimating the project's going to cost in the $2 million range once we get to construction. We currently have, I think, a fund balance of 2.6 million, hope, in our Tia discretionary. And I know that Matt's been in conversation with DOT for the Aplin Harlem widening project through the MPO. And I think in the discussions, they wanted a $2 million commitment there. So we're currently showing this to be funded out of Tia discretionary, but we're really looking forward to the committee and the board's recommendation on where to fund this project.
I'll most likely fund this somewhere else. So if you approve the, I said, we will most likely fund this somewhere else. So if you approve the project, we'll get a funding source back in front of you because we're probably going to need this Tia discretionary money. So I think at this point, you're just approving the independent contractor agreement, but we'll bring the project back and the funding source back to you at a later date.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with Goodwin Mills, K Wood for Arts MPO Consulting. Our MPO, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, Arts Against Arts, receives about $8 to $9 million in federal funding per year. We feel that Columbia County could improve our stance with the MPO. We can improve how much we impact the MPO. We can improve how much benefit the MPO provides to us, however provided our limited time and understanding, full understanding of the MPO. We've reached out to GMC or Goodwin Mills and K Wood. Their planning director, Glenn Coyne, wrote the Arts MPO 2055 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. He's very well-versed in the MPO. We reached out to him. We've been in conversations with GMC on providing us assistance and guidance through several of the MPO processes, and they proposed basically doing a contract that would build time and material at $5,000 per, up to $5,000 per month for a year to support us in our MPO advancement.
Blame this? A little confused. So we want to hire a contractor to help us understand MPO?
Help us work through. So the MPO gets funding from the federal government, right? So it triples down. So there's multiple plans that the MPO puts together. One of those is a transportation improvement plan, so it's where the money gets spent. And it's extremely difficult to work with two different counties, try to formulate a plan to spend that money equally. You don't only plan it for one year at a time, you have to do a three-year forecast, and it's a rolling three-year forecast. So it's just very difficult for us to have our hands wrapped around that money. But we did 5,000 for 12 months. That's $60,000. We could benefit four to five million dollars per year for spending that $60,000. I think Richmond County is probably the same boat we're in. This is not their main goal, and so they're having a hard time keeping their hands wrapped around it as well.
And that's just for the tip, the transportation improvement plan, our program. There's also the Unified Pedestrian Working Plan, and there's the...
Parking Reduction Plan.
Parking Reduction, and the Freight Plan, and it's a lot of, it is...
They have unallocated funding that shows up, and they'll do a call for products where we, Fed said we didn't spend 20 million this year. What products do you have? How do you want to have this money? We have a really quick turnaround to apply for that money. Just apply for some that didn't...
Yeah, and currently, we are getting the PE phase for the Wrightsville Road Widening from Jimmy Dias to Grove Town, funded through the MPO. Washington Road, we just had that project approved from Williamsview Parkway widening it to Tubman Road, PE phase approved. So we feel like we're just scratching the surface with MPO, and we're not fully taking advantage of what we can get from it and what it offers to us. And we're really looking for some support to help us be an advocate for us and a liaison for us with the MPO.
So this is a one-year agreement?
Right. Yes, sir.
I think $60,000 will pay out in spades, basically.
Exactly.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This next item is for the acceptance of improvements for Blackstone Development Company. This is for some sewer utility relocation in River Island. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Last one.
And this final item is acceptance of improvements for Tillery Park South to include the road, storm system, water, and sewer systems, along with the right-of-way and easements associated with those improvements. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Thank you, and I just wanted to thank you for the debris update that you gave us yesterday, and you and your team, and the entire staff for all the hard work, and the care that you have taken over our citizens, and really a very legendary impact that you have made on Columbia County. We appreciate you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Job very hard if it happens again.
Now there are less trees.
Well, it has without a doubt been an all-hands-on-deck effort for the past six months, and even those that weren't working daily and directly in the debris removal operation and recovery were assisting their colleagues and their coworkers in picking up additional load as they worked in the debris removal effort. So it's been a huge undertaking by a big, awesome team.
Yes, to everyone.
If I can add to that, just real quick, Madam Chair, just to make the announcement, we're going to continue to make the public aware of what's going on in Columbia County. But as of yesterday, we did finish our final pass of the right-of-way debris removal. So there will be no more removal from us, from FEMA, from CERES on the right-of-way. Now that we still have a lot of stuff to chip, a lot of stuff to haul away, we still have a lot of work ahead of us. There are some stream projects that we're working on some funding for, so there's still a lot of hurricane cleanup. But as far as the public is concerned, in placing things on the right-of-way, we'll be going forward today with a message that we have completed that part of the process, and just echo what you all said about our staff. What Columbia County has accomplished in this 180 days is nothing short of amazing. I think even our contractors are pretty surprised that they were able to do as much as we pushed them to do in the amount of time that we did that in. Talking to some of my colleagues around the state and some of our neighbors as late as yesterday, and they said, there's no way Columbia County is done, and we are. And it's thanks to Kyle and his team, and the rest of the team. Everybody in this room, I think, had some part in this hurricane response, but we're going to be communicating with the public today, just letting them know that we're no longer going to get, no longer be doing debris removal from the right-of-way. I'm almost positive we're going to get some pushback. There are some people that are still putting things out, and there are people that still expect that. I just want to remind really the committee, but really more public, that Columbia County was at our no, we had no really responsibility to remove any of this. There was certainly no law requiring that we removed any of this, but we removed almost 4 million cubic yards of debris that would have been on the backs of the homeowners and the residents of the county. So we were able to do that. There's still some to be removed. I can very much say publicly that I am still removing my own debris and taking care of it myself, and will be probably for the next year or so, maybe even longer than that. And I think a lot of other people are going to be in that same boat. But I appreciate the support of this commission as we move through that process. I think it was important that we did it, that we expended the money. You all know that we've gotten a very small fraction of what we put out so far. I'm being told it may be years before we're reimbursed. That means that projects may have to be on hold. So I just want the public to understand what a huge undertaking this was, and it's something that we didn't have to do. I say "we," you as a board didn't have to do, but you directed us, that you wanted us to get this done, and this team did it as well as anybody could have. So we'll continue to get that message out. I'll be working with Kyle and Cassidy today to get some additional information out, and we'll just continue the process. But kudos again for a job well done, and we'll continue to communicate with the public.
I hope you can find a way to celebrate with your team some kind of way, because you deserve it.
We'll have a bonfire.
Debris bonfire.
Bang, bang.
Tell any way.
So have we received any more money from FEMA?
No, sir. Not a penny.
Where, what, 60 what?
Our part, we put up, we put our 60 million in. I think as all the invoices get approved, we will eat up all of that money. We have received $17 million in advance payment.
Further clarify a little bit on what you said. So the timeline, much of the timeline has been, of our timeline has been because we are trying to receive a FEMA reimbursement, and so we have to end...
Yeah. So yeah, I think that's really important. I'm glad you brought that up. So yesterday marked the 180 days for us since the storm came. Now, we were six days into the storm before we started, but the fact that we started six days after the storm hit is pretty amazing as well. But yesterday was 180 days. There have not been any extensions from FEMA. Really want to give kudos to the governor and the speaker of the House for stepping up and saying that they would appropriate the money for our 25%. As you know, FEMA is covering the first 120 days at 100%, but that 120 to 180 where we had a bulk of our work, the county's on the hook for 25%. The state has stepped in now and said that they will pay that 25% for us, so we're looking forward to that. We didn't want to push our luck. There's some discussion out there that it would get pushed out past the 180 days, and the state would pick up the rest of that bill, but FEMA's piece would drop down. I'm really afraid that when the state gets that bill for the entire state and not really knowing how hard this area was hit, there's going to have to be a line in the sand somewhere where the money was concerned. So we were very intentional about sticking to the 180 days. We pushed our staff really, really hard to stick to the 180 days. That was our hard stop. It really had to do with funding more than anything else. I'm sure that if we wanted to continue, we could do this for another 180 days if we wanted to. I just don't think that it's fiscally prudent to do that. I think that we may find ourselves in a situation we don't want to be in. So again, we pushed really hard to hit the 180-day mark.
As a state, the money the state's going to pay, we have to follow, I know we had to follow the same process, but in terms of getting reimbursed from the state, does that flow after FEMA?
That's the discussion that I had with one of our state representatives on Saturday. The money, in my understanding is, while the governor and the speaker have said that they're going to cover the entire amount, the money's not been appropriated. Nobody knows where it's coming from, and there's been a lot of discussion that the state would want to get their reimbursement from FEMA, full reimbursement for FEMA before they distributed any of that money. This is going to be a long process. It's going to be a while before we get any of our money back, I'm afraid.
Get together and figure out a way to give it to our guest from back in October. Connect with him.
Right. That we can...
Who promised that he would give us everything we needed?
Well, it has made some additional applications for some expedited money. Expedited should mean 24 hours, and it means three months. What was that number?
Died and will never eventually get not approved because of the tribal interests. So basically, that time is going to end on April 11th, and once they not disapprove it, it will be...
Approved.
Approved. I mean, that's the way they do it. So when that happens, we should get that extension for $10.2 million, which then expedited, they pay 50% upfront. But again, that's kind of like the 17, beginning. It's a loan. But the different part of this is that we have documentation and receipts for everything. So it's all wrapped up in a bow to hand to them, and it will be ready. Therefore, theoretically, it should move a lot quicker than everything that has. So that's the one. Category B for all of the work that everybody has done, not just debris removal, that's also under an expedited umbrella, but there's nothing expedited about it because it's going to, it's taking us months to put that paperwork... it's taking us months to put that paperwork together. Although we have it, it goes into the different, I mean, y'all, I've never seen, I was in the military in the way that we did things. Not comparable at all to the level that FEMA wants us to turn this information in. So theoretically, once that gets turned in, but then it gets obligated from federal to the state, then the state re-obligates it individually. So from what I understand, Scott, and I don't, I don't know this, this was from a month ago, the state has only been obligated like 108 million dollars total. That's still
That's my understanding, a little over 100 million dollars.
The whole state. So of that, we've already got 17 million and however much Augusta-Richmond got and everything else, that's it. That's where the line's drawn. So when they obligate, you know, this giant wad of hundreds of millions of dollars, we go through the FEMA process, then it goes through the GMA process, and then GMA is actually the ones that bless it. Then, over the next two, three, five, seven years, FEMA can then come and say, oh, hey, by the way, you guys screwed this up. We're taking that money back. So it's a double-edged, quadruple-edged process because it's the front way going in and then the reverse coming back. They could ask for everything back. So that's why this process is so long and we're making sure that we give them everything that they need so they can't come slap us. And they're going to, they're going to figure something out later that y'all shouldn't have had that money. And then insurance is working on the process too. I know that Jennifer is, has asked for money. She got like 1.8 million back and there's actually some money that's coming, following that too, like
Commissioner Caraway sits on that board and has made a call on our behalf. So we're continuing to work on the insurance piece as well.
Her response is just, her issue is just slow, if not slower. They have that one person, as you know, that's working for the whole state and it's taken three to four weeks just to get a response through. She's calling them constantly. We're working it.
Have any legal matters? Staff reports, Mr. Gordon.
Yes, I've included the year-to-date budget report and the water and sewer construction project reports. If you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer those.
Mr. Titus.
Yes, we have the roadway projects and the roadway resourcing reports for your review.
Thank you. Any commissioners or public comment this morning? Yes, ma'am. Sure. Calendar. Like Do we plan to cancel the April 8th?
Committees.
Already did.
Okay.
We already, we already did, done that. So we'll meet on April 1st as a commission. We will not meet on the 8th. We'll meet on the 15th as a commission and then the 22nd we will have committees. No, it'll just be the committee scheduled for the 22nd. So the ones that are on the 8th are canceled. If we have any items that need to be brought to that committee, the staff can bring them to me and we can add them to your committee potentially if we, or to this committee, any items that needed to go to your committee.
Thank you. Let's see, we have no executive session items, so we will adjourn at 9:22.